Okay, well, want to welcome everyone to our city council meeting, first council meeting in April. It's just shortly after five and we'll call this meeting to order. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, American, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Here.
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 We do have a quorum today and I would entertain a motion then to approve today's agenda, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Brad, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Across the mayor's desk, Jaden Erpelding is helping us today with our video. And I just want to thank everyone for supporting the Fireman's Pancake Breakfast that was held last Saturday. And it was, it's always good food there and certainly a good cause. And then the Algonah Quanus Club is sponsoring an Easter egg hunt a week from Saturday. So Saturday, April the 16th, it's at 10 o'clock in the morning. And this year it's at Vets Park. In the past, it's been at Central Park, but because of the construction, it's at Vets Park. Saturday, April the 16th. And next, I would like to read a child abuse prevention proclamation. So whereas Iowa's children are one of the most precious resources in our state and provide the hope for a brighter tomorrow in Iowa, and whereas protecting children is everyone's business and we can promote and support safe, healthy families in our community through partnering to protect children, and whereas child abuse is a community issue and finding solutions depends on involvement and partnerships among people throughout the community, and whereas effective child abuse prevention succeeds because of partnerships created between parents, practitioners, schools, faith communities, healthcare organizations, law enforcement agencies, community leaders, politicians, and business community, and whereas all citizens need to be more aware of child abuse and neglect and its prevention within the community and be involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe nurturing society, and whereas public awareness regarding child abuse and neglect is encouraged by Prevent Child Abuse Iowa and Child Assistance Resource Education Team Incorporated. Therefore, I Rick Murphy, Mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of April in the year 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Algonah and urge all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to partner in efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. So certainly a worthwhile and important proclamation. Uh, council, have anything they would like to share?
I did want to mention one thing as we come into this warmer weather. Today was a great day outside. People start thinking about planting down to community gardens. We have a few open plots down there and anybody who's interested in gardening, it doesn't have a good place at their house. We certainly have public garden available, some plots available to use down there. So contact me or contact City Hall, they can contact me if you're interested.
Very good.
Actually, I should let you know the best way is email to Algonah Gardens with an S on the end at Hotmail. That's the email to get in contact with us.
Okay, thank you. Move to agenda item number six, update from the city administrator.
All right, just two quick items. Last week, a number of city staff went through a professional development exercise of Strength Finders, and that was facilitated by Allison Van Otterloo. I just want to take an opportunity to thank her for her time. She works out at Pharmacist Mutual. One of the neat things about, that pharmacist does is allow their employees volunteer days. And so Allison actually used her volunteer day to facilitate our professional development. So just thought that was, that is a pretty neat thing that pharmacist provides and pretty neat that Allison was willing to donate her time to the city and our staff to help us improve and develop and better serve the community. So just wanted to thank Allison for that. And then also just wanted to thank the Cassuth County Community Foundation. This last week, they held their award ceremony for the 2022 funding cycle and the city EMS service received approximately $15,000 to support the purchase of the new power load cot for the new ambulance that's ordered. And then the fire department received approximately $9,300 to go towards upgrading the self-contained breathing apparatus devices. And those are the two specific to the city of Algonah, but they contributed funds all across the county and other cities as well. So want to thank the foundation for the time they put in and distributing funds all across the county that benefits us all, but then specifically for the two for the city of Algonah certainly will make an impact for both those very important items.
Very good, thank you. Agenda item number seven, this is a citizen's opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone here in the council chambers that would like to speak? Want to come up to the microphone there and identify yourselves and...
Yeah, my name's Ron Rafer. I work for Cassuth County and I'm here on behalf of Tanny Eden, the auditor of Cassuth County, and also Dan Green, Director of Veterans Affairs. We're coming here to approach the council and Mr. Jaden, we'd like to invite you over to the DHS Veterans Affairs building. We'd like to approach you about getting the curb cut down to see if we couldn't put a handicap entrance for the veterans. We've broached this subject before and it's kind of been shot down and we're going to kind of broach it again here. There's other places in the community that we have these cutouts. I know they're not designated as handicap. And I talked with your gal this afternoon and she says there's an ordinance that you, they decide where the handicap entrances are, but with the veterans building being in the middle of the block, I just, I appreciate it if we could look at that and maybe see if that was something we could do.
Okay.
I would just say for the benefit of the council and members present, that I do have a fair amount of veterans in the county that have difficulty stepping up over the curb due to a myriad of reasons, whether it's poor vision, neuropathy in their lower extremities and they can't walk real well because of diabetes or things of that condition, or any other combinations, whether it's coming in with a vehicle and they got to get out with a walker or wheelchair or some type of motorized scooter. So primarily, a lot of my veterans are seniors, elderly's up there in years, so their gait and their walking isn't real steady to begin with. And I think there would be less risk if we could accommodate them possibly with not having to step over a curb and actually have a nice designated parking space where if they come into the annex to see me, they could do that. It'd be much more safer for them to do so. Thank you.
Question is, would a situation be better for them to use that parking lot that's on the east side of the building?
There's a designated spot there, but as you know, from point A to point B is always going to, and they want to pull up front. Sure for them. And I get that. Most of them, even though that parking spot's there, they will come up front and Dan has to watch the cameras and help them out and physically help them up over that curb. So anything we can do to accommodate them, like I said, and the reason I'm in on this is me and Will, the other custodian, whatever we got to do to help get this facilitated, we're more than willing to throw our hat in the ring.
I mean, yes, we do have a spot there, folks, but it's not being utilized. And the reason it's not being utilized is because even though it might be there and you can see it on the one side, veterans will have a tendency to take the most direct route, especially if they have difficulty walking or getting to where they need to be. That's why it's conducive, if at all possible, to have it in the front of the building, easily identify, identified and marked for them accordingly. And I think, again, less risk to them in exiting the vehicle than coming into the annex in this case.
So it'd probably be, probably be looking at taking two spots to make one handicap spot to, that could be done.
Correct, yes.
Yes, if we could.
Open invitation, be glad to meet you guys.
All right, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on the phone wanting to speak or?
There is no one on the phone.
No one on the phone. Okay, okay. We'll move then to the consent agenda and that includes approving the minutes from our March 21st council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve a Class C liquor license for Peps, approve a Class E liquor license for Wine and Spirit Shop of Algonah, and approve Jacob's administrator's report. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number nine is a public hearing and it's 5:13. We'll go ahead and we'll open that public hearing, and this is concerning reconstruction projects.
Yes, this is a public hearing on the plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate for the McCoy Phillips Street reconstruction project, which involves the reconstruction of North McCoy Street from Popular Street to Highway 18, reconstruction of Phillips Street from North Street to Pine Street, and then reconstruction of the downtown parking lot at Call and Moore. The engineers, estimated construction cost for the project was $4,327,866.
Wes, want to come up and add anything to that?
A lot to add, I guess. Evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I think Jacob pretty well summed up the scope of the project. We do have bids here, I see on the next agenda item, but the reconstruction of the areas in question, the schedule for that will be such that the area in front of the school, Bishop Garian Area School, will be approached first. And the goal is to complete that before school is out and then move up into the northern part of McCoy once that area is available, or once the south area is complete, rather. And then the Phillips Street work will be a little bit, I guess, it's going to be that unknown until we kind of know how the school portion is going. There will be, the north part of Phillips will be done first, just because of the way the utility infrastructure lays out in that area. So, and then we're working on kind of what the schedule will be for the parking lot. Depends a little bit on, you know, what we think we can do, if we need to do something special for rag bri to accommodate for that schedule or not, and whether that is starting the project too late. So some of that's up in the air, so. Any specific questions on scope or schedule improvements?
Can I just clarify, Wes, I think you misspoke. Phillips or McCoy Street will not be completed before school's out, it will be completed before school starts in the fall.
Yeah.
Going to start after the fall.
Before school's out, so I just wanted to clarify that, no, it's not going to be done before school gets out.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions or?
I must say that I, I've always thought that engineering fees steamed quite high, but you know, I kind of was browsing through your project manual and plan set. It's like, that's huge and very, very specific. You engineers do a whole lot more than I even gave you credit for. But I assume if you set out for bids, everybody has to know exactly what they're bidding on and that's up to you to make that clear.
Yeah, there are a lot of hours that go into it, a lot more than most people realize.
Yes, I think so. Okay.
For the record, I'll share that we have not received any comments or questions from City Hall.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you, Wes, thank you.
Okay, it's 5:16 and we will close that public hearing then on agenda item number nine, and we'll move to agenda item number 10. This is a third reading of an ordinance concerning appointment of officials.
Number 10 is actually on the parking.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
Well, so this is...
Okay.
This is an ordinance regarding parking on Nebraska Street, the sort that does prohibit parallel parking on the east side of Nebraska Street from, excuse me, east side of Moore Street, from Nebraska all the way over my drive currently. It goes from McGrady to Oak High, so extending that north one block. This came out when we did the reconstruction on that project, due to the street width, it was recommended that we remove that parallel parking due to for the potential for accidents and blocking the street.
We've had two readings on this, I don't think we've had much comments or anything, have we? So I'd make a motion, will you waive the third reading?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney, a second from Tyler to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
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 Motion carried. Thank you. Then we'll move to agenda item number 11, which is the appointment of officials, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
See in my agenda memo, I have those switched.
Okay, oh yeah, that's okay.
So this is the third reading, just making some clarifications of appointment of officials in section two of the city code, adding the authorities of the council, the mayor, boards and commissions, they have the authority to appoint that already exists in other sections of our city code, and then cleaning up the language of removing appointments of some of superintendent of public improvements and council appointment of the sewer superintendent, as well as then removing the board of electrical examiners, as well as the playground and recreation commission, both of those no longer exist. This is the third reading.
Make the motion to waive the third reading.
Second.
We have a motion from Brad, a second from Don to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don. Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you.
Make the motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the third reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Make the motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried.
Make the motion to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 12 is a resolution pertaining to street reconstruction projects.
So this is the same project that we just had the public hearing on. Bid opening on this project was...
March 28th.
Opening was on March 30th. We had a total of two bids. Redding's gravel excavating in Algonah, Iowa was the low bid at $4,165,352.80. This is approximately 3.8% of the engineer's estimate, and as you can see from the award recommendation letter from the engineer that they recommended awarding the contract to Redding's gravel and excavating in the amount of bids, that's what this resolution does.
Move to approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion from Don, a second from Rodney. Any discussion?
Got a little bit for our contingency fees that'll come in. It's good to see.
We better vote on this then.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
So once, once that contract's awarded, we'll work with the engineers and Redding's, then kind of get some preliminary meetings on timeline scheduled and then we'll hopefully be here later in this month, rolling out some public informational meetings for effective property owners.
Yeah, good, okay. Agenda item number 13, this is a resolution approving professional services.
Now that the project's been designed and the contract awarded, we need to procure our construction administration services for the project. So this resolution approves the task order with Bolden Bank for construction administration on this project in accordance with the master group the city has with Bolden Bank.
So the scope of services that are laid out in here are generally related to the construction operations oversight of the construction. We typically have a person on site full time as we did last year, kind of observing, making sure things are being done according to the plans and specs. Includes the construction staking and then the contract administration throughout the course of the project. The other piece Jacob mentioned, some public outreach. We're planning again to build the website that we had last year for the project so that people can go out and see updates from time to time of what's going on. Also sign up for email notifications on when things are happening, street closures, water shutdowns, things like that. We try to be out ahead of that and give advanced notifications for that. So that's another piece of what will be done and will be happening here once we get some schedule information from the contractor when things are going to get started, so. So that's what's involved in the scope of services here that is before you tonight over the course of that construction process.
Any questions for Wes or?
And that's, is that above the estimate we've already just approved or is that built?
So what you approved is the construction amount for the contractor. The fees here and the fees that were, that were approved for the design when we put the plans together, those were part of preliminary estimate. And so they are in the overall project.
They're kind of in the overall. I just clarify for the public, I think that helps. I had that in my mind, but just for the public understands, it's kind of...
Yeah, sometimes there's confusion between the total project budget and what's just the construction portion because there's other legal fees and admin and engineering that go into it as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the amount is in the overall budget.
Yes, yeah, it's in that 4-1-3 value in the overall budget.
Not in the 4-1. The 4-1's just the construction.
So it's in the overall budget. Okay, sorry, I misspoke. Yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolution for the professional services for the overall construction administration.
A second.
We have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody to approve these professional services. Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 14, this is a resolution pertaining to the 2022 melon overlay projects.
This resolution does a number of things. Approves the plans, specifications in the form of contract pending the public hearing, which is proposed to be held on May 2nd at 5:00 PM, which this resolution always also sets, as well as then directs the city clerk to issue the ordering of bids and notes to bidders to solicit proposals. The bid opening will be April 26th at 11:00 AM here in City Hall Council Chambers. Scope of the project matches of what we had previously discussed in terms of moving some of those streets that we might still look at adding down the road depending where bids come in. Then having that block, two blocks of Booster Street as a bid alternate. This is a proposed scope of work.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from...
Me.
Rod. Rodney. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
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 Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 15 is a resolution pertaining to the handball or pickleball court project, I mean.
This resolution, similar to one we just passed, approves the plans, specs in form of contract pending the public hearing, which is scheduled on May 2nd at 5:00. And then directs the city clerk to issue notice to bidders regarding. The bid opening for this project will also be at 11:00 AM on April 26th here in council chambers. Been talking to Bolden Bank, the idea being there that since they both involve asphalt work, that'd be advantageous to have those do at the same time as a nice contract double up and try to get both of those in order to bid separately. Are there any questions on the proposed project at all? The cost estimate is a little bit more than what we had originally discussed, but still within what we have budgeted total for Central and South Park, so its construction cost estimate is just under 200,000. A few items to note on just kind of changes on why that number's a little bit higher than what we had previously discussed is that one of them we are going to be adding a new sidewalk and then a landing area here and then adding a new gate here in the center of the tennis courts. So that'll just kind of be a nice shaded landing area to watch or wait, and then that will also serve as the ADA access to the tennis courts as well as the pickleball courts. Then we have kind of a similar landing in front of the pickleball courts, but just given the topography, those would be accessed by stairs. And then on this west fence of tennis courts, we had initially looked at trying to reuse what we have there for fencing, but gave the engineers the direction to go with taking all that fence and the posts out and just putting all new in as we go to butt the course up against people, a much better project at the end of some additional costs, but that way things line up exactly how they should, so. Any questions?
What's line 18 mobilization, or not 18, it's 20 on the plans. It's 18,000 on the bid or the estimate. I'm trying to look it up, but I can't find it.
So the mobilization item, it's also on the bid for the McCoy and Phillips. That is on pretty much, well, it is on every project. So that includes cost for the contractor to mobilize equipment and crews, so it's his travel, his moving equipment, fuel, things like that. It also includes his insurance, other contracting expenses and overhead things that he builds into its cost.
Okay, thanks.
Now, on the surface for this, is it, this isn't just a blacktop company puts this in, is it, is it quite specific for tennis or pickleball courts or? I know we had the tennis courts resurfaced here a year or two ago and it seemed like it was quite a procedure to get the coating on there as it should be.
Nate, Wes, will be to jump in. So it will be an asphalt court. I know it's some of the conditions in there that the difference being like on a court like this, they'll plant, they'll be for 100% virgin material as opposed to having recycled material in there that may be on the street. Then, you know, there, we did explore the option of looking at concrete with a base court, but we'd be looking at upfront additional construction costs of about 40 to 50% in but we'd be looking at upfront additional construction costs of about forty to fifty percent in addition to. And since our existing court is asphalt and we're buddying up against after some lengthy back and forth, we decided ultimately probably makes the most sense to stick with asphalt. And then that's something that, you know, will have to be maintained every couple of years. And then, you know, probably a major, you know, maintenance every twenty years. I think one of the challenges that we have with the tennis court is that was probably that routine maintenance, as well as major maintenance, was deferred longer than it should have been. And then just one quick note, we also are gonna have a retaining wall there, kind of the northwest corner of the pickleball courts and it will be a swale as that haul or the road that didn't have gutter. So that will capture that water as well as, and direct that to the south. And then that will also be the drainage path for the sub drains and outlets for the court runoff floating to the south.
Yeah, I'm happy to see that included in so many projects nowadays, instead of just sending it straight down to the river.
Move to approve the resolution. Second.
We have a motion from Don, second from Brad. Any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number sixteen, this is a resolution concerning policy updates.
So these are all three policies that we discussed in the work session. So what this resolution does is approve the general safety manual, as well as all the attachments with the ten additional policies, as well as the forms referenced in the general safety manual. Then approves the updated return to work policy, approves the updated smoking and tobacco policy, and then finally rescinds all resolutions and policies that conflict with those approved in this resolution. Questions on any of the policies at all?
Motion to approve the safety and personnel policies resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Tyler. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes. Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number seventeen, this is a resolution pertaining to annexation.
City received an application from Farmers Mutual seeking voluntary annexation of two parcels of land. I won't read through the legal descriptions, but I'll show you the maps. Exactly currently own that, but their property that currently aren't in city limits. So this item is simply setting a, or this resolution acknowledges the application of voluntary annexation and then sets a public hearing for May second at five o'clock here in council chambers. And in the interim, the city will be, staff will be working on putting together the packets to provide notification to all the different entities and abutting property owners as required under state law. So this resolution just acknowledges receipt of and sets the hearing for May second.
I'll vote to approve the resolution. Second.
A motion from Tyler, second from Don. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number eighteen then deals with setting a public hearing.
This is for a separate property, but also owned by Farmers Mutual in Park Cynthia. This is a public, set up public hearing for April eighteenth at five P M. On the proposed rezoning of the property showing here, that's six point eight one acres. It's proposed to be rezoned from Ag to Highway Service Business District. The Plan Zoning Commission met last month and recommended approval of the change. And so now we need to set the public hearing.
Motion to set public hearing for regarding ordinance.
Seven.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Tyler. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number nineteen also deals with setting a public hearing.
This is for a property out on Spruce Street in Drive. This would be a public hearing to rezone the property or impose a overlay zoning district to plan residential unit development, a PRUD, to facilitate development out there. So plan zoning met last month and recommends approval of. It's currently zone R M four. So this would allow with the PRUD some additional flexibility within the interior of the site for some considerations on setback apartments and the lot width. So post hearing would be on April eighteenth at five P M.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Rodney. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda, agenda item number twenty is to consider an application for tax exemption.
This is for commercial tax abatement, request for a new building that went up on two two four Norwood Drive. The property owner has requested abatement, scheduled on the ten year decreasing percentage. The properties within the urban revitalization area recommended approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion from Rodney, second from Brad. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad. Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, and thank you for your investment in Algonah. The final item is adjust, adjust, agenda item number twenty-one, this is appointment to the Board of Adjustment. We have a name.
It was brought to my attention that Chris Gerhardt put in, is recommending he be willing to, made, I guess, an application to the city. I, knowing Chris personally, I think he'd be a great addition to the Board of Adjustment, so I'd recommend Chris Gerhardt.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Rodney.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, and thank you, Chris, for your willingness to serve. So that brings us to the end of our published agenda. It is five forty and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. The meeting's adjourned.